Gray. Harding. Let's see. Oh, Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a nice full house again this week. I just want to thank everybody for coming down here. I hope everybody is enjoying the summer. And I just want to take a moment because I get tons of people. It's the summer, kids are outside. Lots of kids are playing outside and one of the biggest complaints I get is the speeding. So if everybody could please remind your neighbors and your children who drive, as I do, two of mine on a daily basis, slow down going through the neighborhoods. Let's all make sure that we have a safe and happy summer and that we try and keep those speeds down, especially in the neighborhoods where our kids are playing. Thanks.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask that you please turn off or silence your phones at this time. I'm Adam Clark.
Items six to nine can be considered together for Builders District located northwest of 15th and Mike Fahey Streets. And if there are no objections, item 51 will be part of the public hearing for this project. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from DS District and CBD to CBD. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Builders District with a waiver of Section 53-85 easements. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Builders District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the Builders District subdivision agreement. Item 51, an ordinance authorizing and providing for an issue of special tax revenue redevelopment bonds in the amount of $5 million for the special tax revenue redevelopment bond Kiwet project.
Without objection, we'll take up item 51 at this time. The public hearings on items six through nine and item 51 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Randy Kuchak, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
And this is for items six to nine?
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six to nine are approved, seven to zero.
Is there a vote on?
No, 51.
It's just a public.
It's just a public hearing, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Items 10 to 19 can be considered together for Privata located southwest of 204th Street and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 10 to 14 are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District, R4 District High Density, R6 District, R7 District and MU District. Item 15, an ordinance to approve the Privata mixed-use district development agreement. Item 16, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Privata. Item 17, a resolution to approve the final plat for Privata. Item 18, a resolution to approve the Privata subdivision agreement. Item 19, a resolution to approve the Privata streetscape and entrance sign maintenance agreement.
The public hearings on items 10 through 19 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Chris. Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant, Wish &amp; One Hand Enterprises. I do have with me today Kyle Bowle with E&amp;A Consulting Group, the engineers for the project. Carlos Scrupin, Sam Homan of the owner group are here also today. We'd be happy to answer any questions. This is a 177 lot subdivision at 204th and Center Streets. The, there are two commercial lots that are part of the first phase. There are three apartment multifamily zone lots and the rest is all residential. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Ten through nineteen are approved, seven to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in a DS District located at 1804 Paul Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Wallace Haley, here on behalf of American Tower, the applicant. I'll be glad to answer any questions you folks may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Sam &amp; Louis New York Pizzeria located at 2062 North 117th Avenue.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Welcome, Mr. Weinberg.
Yes, Mike Weinberg. I represent Poppy. It's a takeover from a prior franchise. We acquired the franchise and we're applying for the liquor license after we got the franchise approved. If you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Namaste Bazaar located at 5474 North 90th Street.
The public hearing on item 22 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 22 is approved, seven to zero. Item 23, an application to consider in addition to Patty McGowan's Pub &amp; Grill's Class C liquor license located at 4503 Center Street to add an outdoor area approximately 46 feet by 7 feet to the east. A's communication from the Planning Department regarding permits.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Dan Amsec representing Patty McGowan's Pub &amp; Grill.
4503 Center Street?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? You understand you need to get and will be contingent upon permits?
Yes.
Thank you.
For all proper purposes.
Is there a motion? Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 24, an application to consider in addition to Cambria Hotel and Suites Class C liquor license located at 740 North 14th Street to add an outdoor area approximately 12 feet by 58 feet to the east.
The public hearing on item 24 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Sean Severson, on behalf of Omaha Hotel Partners, 740 North 14th Street. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 25 through 29 were held on June 11, 2019. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 25 through 29 are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 30 through 45 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address. Identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty through 45 are approved, seven to zero. Item 45, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts lots and pieces of real estate to cover the cost of clearing snow and ice from sidewalks. Group number 2018-02 is a minimum of the whole request by the Public Works Department.
Is there a motion on the amendment as a whole? Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 47, an ordinance approving the 17th supplemental agreement with Douglas County and the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission to provide for the issuance of up to $114 million of new bonds to pay costs related to justice facilities and juvenile detention facilities as an addition to the Civic Center and as an addition to the Hall of Justice.
What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Pauls.
Mr. President, I just need to make a few comments before we vote. As I've been reviewing all the people who've been, the pros and cons. After my emails and texts, I found out that it sounds like the people are not talking to each other. It's really interesting for those pros and those cons. On one side, we have the unions for it. One side, we have it against it. I've had psychiatrists or psychologists for it, psychologists or psychiatrists against it. I was amazed, and to be honest with you, I had a couple of my friends who lived down in the old market, they spoke to us. However this vote comes out, this is what I like to make sure the county commission does. It appears, since there is a little bit of reaction to this, that we need to have a group, and I don't want to call it a commission, but some group who follows this. And I'll give you an example of a couple of the people that I know, other than elected officials. We need people like, and I don't want to embarrass her, but she did come up, so I will mention her name, Sharon Martin, who I know, who I hired many years ago, very intelligent person. She is, I can tell by her comments, she really questions this. And Maria Fernandez, who at one time had a restaurant down in the old market, she also was against it. But then I've had other people on the other side, like I said, who are for it. So I think if we can get a handful of people, not elected people, who will actually follow this along and then they can see as it is, if it is built, that these are the things that we should really be taking a look at. I sincerely believe that. So they feel that they did have a part in this, that we did listen to them. I just jotted down a few things. I know one of the first things we did, we made sure that we had a building potentially for the judges and the attorneys. Well, I'll tell you how it was when I was a school principal. We had the building, and of course, most of the area I was in was growing. And what did we do? We bought portables and we set them outside. So I thought to myself, well, maybe, maybe we actually ought to buy some portables and set them outside for the second, for the judges and the attorneys. I know that sounds a little bit weird, but I'm just saying, I expected teachers to do that. And they're professionals. But that did not happen. We did, I think by vote, if I recall, six to one on this council to purchase the building not too far from us. So that's a done deal. Then I got to thinking a little bit more. And I need to ask the, some of the gentlemen behind us. Could I have a Planning Department? Are you there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Name and address.
Eric England, Planning Department.
How much did the Planning Department, the city Planning Department, have in this project?
We have met with the prospective applicant one or two times in, probably since early fall of last year on the original site. I'm not aware of any meetings on the new site.
That's basically the extent of the planning. Normally on a project, aren't we heavily involved? On any, a project that comes in front of us? Like the ones that we just voted on a few minutes ago. Were we involved in those projects, as the Planning Department?
Yes, typically we would have much more involvement.
Okay. Somebody from the law?
Paul Crass, City Attorney, sorry.
No, no, I understand. How much involvement, I know we have an attorney who sits on the building commission, but how much were we as a city involved in this project by, out of our law?
The city law department was not involved at all in the project. You're right, we do have one of our lawyer that sits on the, advises the building commission and he was involved in those various discussions. But the city law department itself was not.
Okay, now I'm going to talk to business.
Steve Curtis, Finance.
Thank you, Steve. How involved was the city in this project on the business side?
We had no involvement.
Are you getting my message? The people behind us who we depend on for information, they were not involved in this. And that's how sometimes I feel, when I started getting into the meat of this subject, I thought, well, I need to find this, I need to find that, but that was not my, that is not my decision. That decision belongs to the county commissioners. Now I do understand, so I don't want anybody to give me a 101 on the building commission. I get that. And if you heard last week when Ernie Chambers is here, he's probably going to make some changes in the fall on that. But we are working with what we're working with. And I know a lot of people, and I'm trying to answer some of the people, said, well, we're spending $114 million. I think that's the price tag. And I got to thinking, you know what, this council, and I supported it, I voted for it because I think the city needs it. This is what I voted for not too long ago. We're going to improve the downtown city with the help of some gracious businessmen and women. Going to spend 50 million on that, which I voted for. I think we all voted for that. But had a little bit of input in on that. Oh, a little bit more. 3 million a year for 10 years. It's 30 million in 10 years for maintenance of this area. So that's 80 million. And we voted, and we passed it. I did. We needed it. The city needs it. So that was my answer to those people who are saying, well, you're going to spend 114 on this building. I get that, and that's tough. But just a couple of weeks ago, we spent our will be spending, didn't spend, but will be spending 80 million dollars. I didn't have a lot of people standing or sitting, coming down and telling us, hey, that was wrong, that's not the way to go. But that was our responsibility. I also look at, you know, we brag, right, not too long ago, we were bragging about the College World Series coming, which is here right now. Now, if we had listened to, because I did not want it to do away with the Rose Blatt Stadium. I didn't. I loved it. It reminded me many years ago, for those of you who really get it, when the Kansas City Athletics were in Kansas City and they had a ballpark basically like Rose Blatt. I mean, the place you want to go, just loved it because you just, the energy there. But we would have lost the College World Series. And there are lots of people who are against that. Now here's another thing. One of the largest employees in the state of Nebraska and the city of Omaha is a med center. Now I can remember when I was down in the legislature, they needed some additional monies for that med center. And we approved that. The city of Omaha, not everybody on the council, but the city of Omaha approved that. And look at that part of town is doing right now. It's unbelievable. So sometimes you do some of these things that need to happen. Now I know that some people, I did not, some people visited the city of Minneapolis and they told me that they have something similar that's being proposed here down in the heart of the city. And they had all these unique buildings around it. And I wish that person would speak up because I wasn't, I didn't go to that. Sometimes I think you need to look beyond what's happening right now. And believe it or not, I'm going to advertise a little bit for Finicky Franks. I don't know if you've ever been to Finicky Franks as you go up to Ponkey Hills? Well, if you go up, Finicky Frank's a good place. You go further up the Alpine Inn, then there's a building up there that's a campus. And what is that called, Uta Holly? There's a campus up there. And I noticed they're starting to create, redo that because we have a benefactor who says, hey, that's a campus that we need to put some of these, these young men and women who need to be in a setting other than a detention center. And then as I drove around on 40th Street, I said, the Omaha Home for Boys. And as you go down Dodge Street, as I heard Christ, or the Child Saving Institute is playing there. So we have all these programs going out there. Now I've also been told it's going to be three years, if this building does go through, there'll be three years before it's completed. And hopefully in that three-year period of time, some of these programs that they are indicating that we need to have in place, they'll have time to work out the kinks. I know we need that from my past experience. A lot of people have these great ideas, but you need to work them through. I know that. I've lived that life. So that's one of the reasons why my vote, as you probably picked up on, I don't believe it's my vote to stop this project. I just, I just can't see where the commissioners, six to one, voted for this. Now, not everybody on this council necessarily will vote for it, but the commissioners who have been working on this for quite some time. In fact, my only downside to this is, why weren't you working on this a number of years ago? But that's something else. And on this, the commissioners, the seven of them, I know some of them very well. And I don't see the six who voted for it as people who are out there trying to do anything wrong. And the one who voted against it, which I understand, that's why we have a democracy. I worked with that individual down as a lobbyist in the legislature. I know these people. I don't see them as people who are trying to disrupt what's going on. I see it as something that they're really sincerely trying to do. And as I say, as I go back to it, I says, the pros and the cons, we have so many actual, if we could get together on some of these issues, because I do believe that. And to be honest with you, the two individuals who I didn't want to embarrass, they did have them to walk in and those were the individuals I'd say need to be on a group that would be somewhat of the overseers of this, if this does happen to pass. I understand the building commission, but basically, as indicated, the people, the individuals behind us had very little involvement. But if I had a question on something, I would depend on those individuals. I can't turn around and say, hey, what about this, what about this, what about this? Now, I don't know, but I'm assuming the county commissioners have the ability to ask people, what about this, what about this, what about this? And I know there have been surveys and studies taken, but sometimes you need to massage some of those things. For those of you who are into research, always read a little bit beyond some of the initial sightings and you're going to see but for. So I'm going to ask somebody to do that. But again, county commissioners, if this does go, I do hope you will take one piece of advice from me as you will get these people such as, as two of my, I'll mention their names again so I can really embarrass them. Sharon Martin and Marie Fernandez. They need to be on this because they're going to ask you some questions that you will not be able to quote hide behind. Because they're going to say, hey, what is this? You told us this and this happened. And also, some of the individuals on the police force that have some questions. Can I, because I can understand why they have concerns. So that would be my throwback to you because you threw this to me. Not to me, but to the council. Because that's the way the law has been written. But like I say, I don't have all that information. So I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just say a couple of words. As, I'm a voting member of the Omaha Douglas Building Commission and when this item has come before us, I voted not in favor of it. I don't have any additional information that would cause me to change my vote. And what I've consistently said, among other things, is that although this is very important, I think the programs are really the important part of this. And before we spend 25 to 30 million dollars on a facility that we don't know what the actual need is, I think that's cart before the horse. And it's interesting that, you know, with, with the, with the programs, and I've never been, I've never been hung up on the number of beds. I know we started out with 44, I think it moved to 68. I don't care if it's 44, 68, or 12. I think what's really important is getting the programs in place. And I know a lot of that's taken, has already started. I applaud those who've made those efforts and I look forward to seeing what the results of those are because at some point, I think we do need to have some attention given to either a current facility, a renovated facility, or a new facility. But at this time, I think it's important to have those programs in place, see what the results of that are, and then build to the need with some ability to expand if that's warranted. So as I said, I think my, well, I know my vote will not be any different today, but I just wanted to make sure it was on the record at least at the city council level as to what my main argument was for having that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to try and be brief, but there are some areas that I want to address here specifically. First of all, I've been supportive of this project from day one, but I've been supportive of this project based on, based on research that other individuals have done and based on research and information and places that I have been where we have heard from the best experts in the business in the country who have told us that this is the, this is the best approach to dealing with our young people. I want us to keep in mind a couple of things. That the young people that we're talking about, nearly 70% of them come from primarily three zip codes. 68111, 68110, and 68107. Those are primarily areas where a number of people of color reside. Looked at data recently, and the most recent data that I have been able to gather is that the state of Nebraska and the state of Nebraska specifically and in and around the Omaha area, we still arrest more people of color than any of the states that surround us. We need to address that in a fashion, something similar to this. More importantly though, I think there have been a number of experts who have come forward who have been dealing with this issue for
who have been dealing with this issue for a significant period of time. We heard from Tom Warren, the former police chief, who now works with young people on a regular basis, who knows what it's going to take to turn our young people around. We have heard from others who have started programming and kept this program, programming going, like Willie Barney and Step Up, like Cecilia Creighton and U-Turn, and some of the other areas where people are actually dealing on the ground with young people in crisis, and doing things to turn them around. If you look at this in a vacuum, then you can argue this back and forth, but when you look at it in terms of all of the pieces that go into place around this, Step Up, U-Turn, Heartland Workforce Solutions, quite frankly, had those institutions not been in place, we would be having a worse problem than we have right now. In addition to that, by having a juvenile justice center in the same, co-located, you have the opportunity for individuals to, individuals who, who on a normal basis deal with young people regularly, they will have the opportunity to deal with them in a one-stop-shop. And if you don't realize what a one-stop-shop can do, I would advise you to go visit Heartland Workforce Solutions, where they're doing a number of things, and bringing in a number of folks in a number of different areas, and having amazing results in addressing chronic unemployment in this community. So having a one-stop-shop benefits families, it benefits those who are working with children, it benefits the judges, it benefits the prosecutors and the public defenders, because all of the information is there, all of the information is available. And if there is a need to move further, people are not having to take buses, one and two and three different places to try and get business done. I am supportive of this. I know that this is part of the answer. It is not the magic bullet. We have put several things in place that will address this, but we continue to move, we need to continue to move and continue to address this in ways that are going to have demonstrated results for young people. And I think when you look at the programs that are already in place, other programs that this council has put, has supported, and what those programs are doing at this point, I think it's a no-brainer to place this in a one-stop-shop downtown, where all of the information, all of the access, all of the ability for families to come together to have a chance at being successful. This is the place to do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Councilmember Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, one of the things that Councilman Gray just brought up is the data. And one of the problems that we did run into when Ms. Chin was doing her report was the lack of data available. In fact, our report was actually delayed due to the difficulty in trying to get correct data. And so that is something, moving forward, when we talk about the programming, again, this is about the programming. Programming, 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 whether there's a new building or no new building in terms of a detention center. In order to reduce the amount, the amount of children that we have in detention, and reduce the disproportionate amount of African-Americans that are in the detention centers, well, we need that data. And so as part of the programming, we need to make sure that we have the data so that we know the exact numbers, so that we can work towards solving those problems. And so it's just one of the things that I wanted to make sure you knew. Data is a problem. We're not necessarily always tracking it. I know, I was speaking with Sergeant Martin earlier, talking about the data on the number of children that are on probation, whose GPS monitor is released, and how it'll take days sometimes before the probation officer figures it out, or notifies the police so that we can go out there. It's that we know where they are, which are some of the issues that I know the Omaha Police Officers Association is having with some of these issues. They're saying that some of the programs that we have right now just isn't working, and that we don't necessarily have the data, and there are issues going on. That's something that we can solve and start working on today, and something that we really need to, and really need to focus on putting that, putting the money into that. I'm supportive, when I was on the building commission, I made a motion to support the 96 million for the courthouse annex, which is not just for judges and attorneys, as the goal for that building, and the building next to it for the MUD Center, is to have all of the programs in the same building. We want to have probation, and intake, and CASA, and guardian-at-light homes, and, I mean, everybody that they need to see needs to be in that building, so we're not sending them across the street to probation, down the street for intake, and all over the city. I mean, it is absolutely ridiculous the way our system is working right now. And so we do need this, and it probably is one of our biggest needs, because we're dealing with children. And what everybody has been focusing on, I just want to say, everybody focuses on the children that are just in detention, and our juvenile system is more than that. The entire juvenile court system is more than just the kids that we have charged with crimes. This is about families. This is about mothers and fathers, and foster care system, and children that are being abused, and trying to help those families before those children get old enough, that maybe they are getting involved in crime because they never got the services when they were younger, their parents never got the services that they needed when they were younger. Our system is much bigger than just the 40 to 80 children that we may have in a detention center. I just think that that's where all the focus has gone. And we need to make sure that we are focusing on not just those kids, but the entire system as a whole. I know we're, it looks like we're going to be replacing promisship with another contract, which is significantly lower in money. And sometimes, you know, like I said, in our, in the debate we're having in our trash contract, you get what you pay for. I'm a little concerned. In fact, I'm very concerned with the status of where our juvenile, really, our entire juvenile system is going to be in the next year, with or without a co-located detention center. So I do think that maybe our focus has gotten turned a little bit. I would like to see the programming for the first three years while we build the building, and have the detention center be phase two. Not no to the detention center, but let's do one at a time, and let's see what the needs actually are before we do it. And so I will remain supportive, whether this passes or doesn't pass, I will remain supportive of any kind of new programming, getting it all together in the downtown area so that we have a one-stop-shop for families, and continue to support those programs. And I really, truly appreciate everybody that has come down, and in my opinion, worked together on this issue. A lot of people have come around, and when I heard at some of the meetings, well, you didn't include me, or somebody wasn't included, I can tell you, in this Chin report, where you list the well over 100 people that she talked to in the report, I do think everybody was given the opportunity to have a say, whether we agree or disagree with the end result here. I think that there was a lot of participation. I've gotten to know a lot of people that I might not have gotten to know or spoken with had we not gone through, or met with the number of people that we've met with. So I want to thank everybody that's put a lot of work into this. And I did travel up to Ramsey County, and they are instituting these programs. And they are, they are working. They are working in Ramsey County. And I think it's great that we are looking to other counties, potentially cities, to see what works for them, and attempting to kind of follow in that. But again, it was about the programming, and that's what we need to be focused on. And what we're voting on today is all money that goes to buildings. None of the money we're voting on right now goes to programming. So with that, I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
I just have to bring up one or two things, because I see a former senator up there. I can remember when the things dealing with juveniles was taken basically away from the institutions and privatized. And we didn't see an awful lot of change. That's why they're changing the system right now. Everybody thought that was the answer. They thought they knew how to do it. They found out they didn't do it basically any better than what the government ran programs were. So I think that's like this in ways, in my understanding. I know there are more than one councilperson who went up and saw the project in a certain city. I wish that person would speak up and describe what that looked like, so we'd have a feeling about it's more than just this building. Because I've been told they're working, by the person sitting to my side here, that they're working on programs. And we do have some people who, from the private sector, who are investing a lot of their personal money to make this thing work. Believe it or not, you do need some of that money to make this thing work.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we have, we have programming that has already started, and is already having results, and is already being measurable. Secondly, we have individuals who have come before this council who are experts in this. Charles Drew Health Center, for example, we've been studying this issue for probably 15, 20 years. And we know some of the ins and outs of what the problems are and how to address those. Voices for Children has been at this since 1990. They know what the problems are, they know what the issues are, they know how to address this. Many of us have spent our own personal time, working with gang members and others, to recognize and understand what the problems are, not only with the young people, but with the families as well, and how to address that. We have experts who already know how to do this. We have experts who are already implementing programming. We have community foundations and organizations that are already spending money to begin these programs, or these programs have already started, and they're starting to measure how well these programs are being done. So some of the work is already, a lot of this work is already being done, and experts have come before this council and told you specifically what the needs are. Charles Drew knows what the needs are. The Urban League knows what the needs are. The Empowerment Network knows what the needs are. I mean, it's just a matter of, are we going to do it, or are we not going to do it? That's the issue. Because we understand that we know what the issues and the needs are. And we have professional individuals who have spent time, effort, and resources to put together the best possible program. So I see us, I see this as something that has already been started, there has already been implementation in certain areas. So many companies, so many organizations, Omaha Home For Boys and others, have already begun to step up and have beds available for some of our young people who are in crisis. We have been told over and over again that mental health is a critical issue, especially as it relates to young people, and we have to address that. And if we don't address it today, we're going to pay for it dearly tomorrow. So for me, this is, I'm supportive of this, will continue to be supportive of this. And this one-stop-shop idea of bringing all these folks together and families together so that we can significantly get something done in one location, I think is a plus, not even close to a minus. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I've had a couple things that come to me as I've been thinking about this, and primarily, from 30,000 feet, I would say that the legislature, in its wisdom, has, by statute, placed certain matters within the parameters and province of the county board. And two of those are county law enforcement and juvenile justice. For their wisdom, better or worse, it's not in our purview, those issues. We do engage with some of the programs that you've heard here in terms of funding them, whether it's the Step Up program, or the Anti-Truancy program, or the Dusk to Dawn, things like that, summer camps, activities for youth, but primarily, the juvenile justice is something squarely within what the county board is supposed to do. They have immersed themselves in that issue. They're experts on that issue, and we are not. So for those who have expected us as a council and as a body to make ourselves, in a matter of a few weeks, experts on juvenile justice, it's a big ask to do. So from my view, I'm relying heavily upon what the county board as a body has decided in terms of what the county's needs are, and the justification for those needs. And they have spoken, notwithstanding one of my friends on the minority of the vote, who represents the area of the county that I happen to reside in, and where the current juvenile detention facility is. I'm relying upon them to guide us on that issue. So then, I look at, well, what exactly is going on in terms of the location? And I think back, it's not too long ago, although it's getting farther by the year, when I started practicing law back in the early 90s, I had a few juvenile cases. And my then-law partner thought it was one of the ways that a young lawyer should learn how to be a lawyer, is you should represent some people in the juvenile justice system. And guess where you'd go to visit your juvenile clients? I wouldn't even call it a detention center. It was a jail, and it was on the sixth floor in the courthouse. That's where we started as a community. So when people say, please don't put a juvenile jail in downtown, there was one, and it was here for many, many, many decades, and it was just on the east side of this complex. What is being built, though, is what I am learning is a rather 360-degree approach to juvenile needs, from detention to programs, to a one-stop location where all of that and access to those services can be provided. So then I turn to the next thing that I heard constituents say, and that is concerns or fears that if this is approved by the city council, and it's, this up to 114 million is issued, and it includes this juvenile justice center at the location where proposed, what may happen to development around it? Those are from people with experience, the owner of Howlin' Hounds, whose family has owned the building that that business is located in for decades. And one of the first people I met in the lead-up to the 2009 election was walking his dog, because he lived at the time, out by Elmwood Park, is Greg Sexer. So I know Greg, going back to over 10 years now. So he has justifiable concerns from his experience with the expansion over time of the county jail. And a restaurant owner of the Flatiron, who, you go to a wonderful dinner at the Flatiron Restaurant, and my wife and I have been there, it's one of her favorites. And so do you want to approve something that could bill on a site that would any way really present a substantial adverse risk to development? And it came to me that, two things. One, a few years ago, when I was desperate to try to get people to invest in development in downtown and midtown, I met some good folks from a company called Ryan Development. And I was thinking about that meeting, because where they were most proud of a very recent development was across the street from what I believe is the Hennepin County Juvenile Justice Center. And so we have the Hennepin County Juvenile Justice Center, we'll say, is here where I'm sitting. And then on one side, there's a street. And on that street, the county and the city felt so strongly about the location, they placed a streetcar route, where you can stop right there, and you can go to a green space. It may be a dedicated park, it may not be a park per se, but there's a green space. And then on the other side of the block is, I think, about a $300 million new Wells Fargo corporate headquarters building. It is a beautiful, beautiful development, all on the block. If you go out this direction, and I don't know what's north, south, east, and west as I was walking, and this wasn't with any trip organized by anyone here, it was when I was in Minneapolis, US Bank Stadium where the Vikings play. That's probably a billion-dollar development. And then, if you go more to the left, on the other side of the Wells Fargo building, I believe there's a Radisson Hotel. And I don't know what that cost. Ryan Development is looking at building a 20-some-story luxury luxury home, or office, or mixed-use structure, again, within the block. So you have hotels, you have corporate headquarters, you have restaurants, you have entertainment. To me, while the concerns are legitimate, I think that with design, that those concerns will be addressed, in terms of the welcoming nature of, of what the structure's going to look like, its street presence, what's happening at street level. Are people just going to look at a wall of concrete? So I would like to encourage, if what I've seen in digital format, is some semblance of those desires for the design team in the county, I'd really like to encourage the planning department to insist upon, in the design process, that those needs be addressed, so that the, the development in the existing environment is respected, and in fact, enhanced. And, but not convinced that, that it would be jeopardized. The last thing I would say is, that if this is approved, if you, if you haven't been to the current place out by my house, and, and just between the, the Field Club Trail and Morton Meadows on the county complex properties, you should, you should take a look. Because it says a lot about how our community has really focused on the jailing aspect of our children, and not the improvement, rebuilding, giving the youth the programs they need, and opportunities to get out of this, these lives that have devolved into horrible choices, in many respects, because of their environment. Not all. I mean, there are some really bad people, and as the police said, they need to be detained until we can figure out the appropriate course and location for those people to be. But for those reasons, I will be voting to support this today. And with that, I see we have another light. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to maybe bring us all back to center here for a second, and remind everyone what we're actually voting on. We're not voting on the design. We're not, we're really not even voting on the location. What we're voting on is whether or not, as part of the arrangement with the Omaha Douglas Building Commission, is whether or not to issue bonds, to act as the bank for a county project. There are some that would make the, the, the argument that this, the courthouse annex, which Councilmember Melton talked about, certainly is a joint project between city and county. There are those that would argue that the Juvenile Justice Center, as you pointed out, which is the purview of the county, is a county function. And what we're being asked to do is give the ability to the building commission to act as the bank for this project. I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on that. It's all well and good to talk about the design, where it, what it looks like, or even where it's located. But what we're being asked to do is to affirm, or not affirm, the ability of the, of the building commission to issue the bonds on this project.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do need to respond to that. A former educator, dealt with children for thirty-some years. I can see how we can affect a child, beginning at kindergarten, at all levels. I've been in schools, very affluent, where the kids could buy and sell me. And I've been in the schools where you cannot believe the number of free reduced lunches. So I'm, that part is a part of my life. And I understand the comments that you made, Councilman, about the amount of money that we're going to give to actually people such as yourself, since you said it on that commission. But if you can recall earlier, when I made, this is around one-hundred-and-fourteen, when I made a comment earlier, and that's the reason why I'm going to have to reinforce this, because typically I don't, because politically, it's not good for me. I voted, as all of us on here, voted fifty million dollars for downtown, which we need. It's going to help Omaha. And then, three million a year for maintenance, for ten years. So that's an eighty million. So make a comparison, eighty million. And we really didn't have a lot of input from the people, other than the people behind here, who talked to us, and those people who, who had the vision. It wasn't the city that had the vision, in my estimation. It was a group of individuals out there who really had a vision, and we are part of that. But I, I, I think if we're concerned about the money, then we ought to, then we need to be more concerned about lots of things we do. That's, it's, it's that simple. When we're going to bring up money, then I say, hey, we have to look at all, all sides of the issue. And like I say, and I did vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a, there is a motion. There is a second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
abstained.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to two.
We're going to withdraw item forty-eight at this time.
Is there, we need a motion in a second to do it.
Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item forty-nine, in ordinance transferring funds from unencumbered balances in the twenty-eighteen general fund budget of the City of Omaha, twenty-eighteen year-end closing.
Public hearing, item, item forty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item fifty, in ordinance to amend various sections of chapter twenty-three of the Omaha Municipal Code to reflect changes for the administrative and executive classifications for the years twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and twenty-twenty. Personnel Board recommends denial.
Public hearing on item fifty begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Bernard Indembash, Deputy City Attorney, eighteen-nineteen Farnham Street. We've talked a little bit about it. This is a group that's unrepresented by, by a group, by, specifically excluded from representation by the CIR, represents employees in the city council offices, Law Department, and the Human Resources Department, and is intended to mirror the contracts that were provided to Local Two-Fifty-One and the Functional Union earlier this year, basically providing moving employees to a high-deductible health care plan, commencing in twenty-twenty, and doing a three percent raise for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. One peculiarity in this particular case, which led to the city council, the concern of the personnel board, this particular group of employees tends to be older. Roughly ten to fifteen percent of the group is eligible for Medicare. Based on federal law, employees who are eligible for Medicare, and receive city health insurance, are not eligible to receive, and a contribution to the health savings account. So for the high-deductible health care plan, which automatically puts your deductibles at either twenty-seven-fifty for single, or fifty-five-hundred for single plus one, or family, this, they would not be eligible for the contribution of seventeen-fifty for single, or thirty-five-hundred for single or family plus one. So for those particular individuals, this contemplates a cash payment in lieu of that, that is taxable, that's intended so that those folks don't end up having to bear the entire amount of the deductible, much like you would, like they would be, the net result would be based on federal law. So that caused a little bit of concern for a member or two of the personnel board. I just wanted to explain that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions. I apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question.
Okay.
Approximately, how many people are you talking about?
So, so the group itself represents roughly fifty employees. And the information provided by the payroll division is that of that fifty or so employees, seven of those either will be, are sixty-five, or will be sixty-five in twenty-twenty. So that's the, affected by both the contract overall, as well as by that particular provision.
And I, am I to assume the majority of those individuals have been with the city for a while?
Other than perhaps some of the elected officials, who may not have been that long, but most of those employees will have been with the city for an extended period of time, typically in excess of twenty years.
Okay. So basically, we would somewhat be punishing them if we did not support this?
Certainly, the effect of moving to the high-deductible health care plan would be substantially, have a substantial, bigger effect on them than it would be for all the other employees, who would in fact be eligible to receive that contribution.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Curtis?
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
This morning, I, I questioned, since we're going to this high deductible, and we're supposed to be saving money for the city, I don't know, did you have any chance to find out what some of the figures are, as we move to high deductible?
I did. We went back and found the Silverstone work. And for the group of civilians, so this would include all civilians, assuming all civilians had accepted this plan, I think year one, it was a few hundred thousand. I believe, if I remember correctly, they project that that will grow larger as time goes on. And I believe it was a similar thing for police. It was muted, though, because we did a match. And I think, I think we couldn't actually show that we had saved anything, because we had that match at the beginning of police. But to answer your question, it was a few hundred thousand, on about thirty-eight million or so.
So I, I looked them up, too. The Silverstone projections for police were three-hundred-and-seven-thousand in year one, five-hundred-and-seventy-six in year two, and then one-million-fifty-seven-thousand in year three. Now, those were projections that were manufactured in twenty-seventeen.
Okay. Well, then, let me ask, the only way for this really to make gigantic steps is not to reimburse the individuals in the future?
There is no question that a lot of the savings that we might get by changing the plan structure are offset by the contributions that we put into the health savings account. And those, the amount that the city puts in the health savings account, absolutely will be the subject of negotiations in the future. And that is probably the biggest variable, as far as how you would, how you could increase savings to the city.
Well, then, let me ask you, how long, when does that being renegotiated, since it's going to be part of the package?
The contract for police goes through the end of twenty-twenty. The contract for Local Two-Fifty-One and Functionals, where the high-deductible health care plan goes into effect at the beginning of twenty-twenty, is only through the end of twenty-twenty. And this particular agreement mirrors those in time. It ends at the end of twenty-twenty. So if, assuming nothing occurs, we would make the same contributions in twenty-twenty-one as we did in twenty-twenty, because we generally have an obligation to stay the same. But the parties could certainly negotiate. Frankly, they could negotiate increases, or decreases, or they could stay the same.
Okay. So again, like you say, there's, there is the potential for this actually to be negotiated out?
There's potential for that to occur, absolutely. Just like, we're negotiating, going from one type of a health care plan to a totally different kind of health care plan. Absolutely.
Okay. And do you feel, were the, those people who voted for this, did they have an, an understanding of that? Or did they think they're going to have this additional money every year for years?
Well, the one thing that is different about this than others is, the money in your health savings account stays with you. So if you don't spend it, you keep it, and it can accumulate and build up, and you can use it, you know, for years and years and years, if you're fortunate enough not to have to occur in expenses during that year. There, I know there was an awful lot of education done in both the police union and Local Two-Fifty-One, prior to the time that these things were adopted. And quite frankly, a lot, a lot of education done after they were adopted, because even though it's, you talk about it on a theoretical basis, it is a dramatic change for employees, and understanding how to use their health care dollars. So, and I know the Human Resources Department and Silverstone are both committed to that educational campaign.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Non-action.
Non-action items, items fifty-two through ninety, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion adjourned? Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three oh four.